Board members, starting to my left.
Thanks for coming. Patty McCoyn, thank you so much for coming out on this beautiful evening.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Perkard, and thank you for all of you who are here. Yeah, same thing. It's such a nice night. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lauren Christensen. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Anupam Chuksedu. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening. I'm Judy Westra. Thank you for coming out.
All right, Dr. Merritt. Sorry, Josh. It's all good.
Good evening. Josh Patterson, Student Voice in Action Co-Chair and Plymouth sophomore. Always forgetting it somehow.
My apologies, Dr. Merritt.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here and capturing our minutes. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Rudgerello. Sorry.
Frank Rudgerello, Communications and Marketing.
Good evening. Kurt Siskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Good evening. Jill Minnick, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
I am Abdulai Yunam, the Chief Human Resources Officer.
Good evening. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement. Welcome.
All right, Mr. Patterson, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is the adoption of Agenda Approval Consent Agenda, action item 240463.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the Agenda, approve the Consent Agenda, action item number 24-04-63.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Dr. Merritt, will you walk us through?
This evening, the Consent Agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have leaves, resignations, and retirement for your consideration. We have tenure recommendations, as well as the approval of minutes from our regular meeting that was on March the 12th. We have first readings of the following policy, 5464, that is early graduation, and we have the final reading of Policy 3131, Reduction in Certified Staff. Finally, we have an out-of-country field trip for your consideration.
All right. Is there any board member who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right, any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, passes seven zero. Turn it over to Mr. Manyun.
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 Thank you. I want to point out, there were two retirements that I would like to, it was special note to. One was Nancy Wortowitz. She was an elementary classroom teacher at Workman. She had been an employee for Plymouth Canton since September 10th of 1991. I'd like to thank her for her years of service to the district and congratulations on her retirement. Also, we had another retirement, Michelle O'Neil, computer program at Canton. She was an employee at the district since August 31st of 2020. I'd like to thank her again for her years of service to education and to Plymouth Canton and welcome her and wish her well in her retirement. We also had two teachers who attained tenure, and I would like to read a few words from their principal. The first one is Amanda Beshan, and this is a letter by Danielle Ramos. As an assistant principal who leads the science department, it has been a pleasure to work with Amanda Beshan. Amanda currently teaches IB Biology and honors Biology at Plymouth High School. Amanda has been an active participant in intensive professional developments regarding curriculum spending, many days learning all she can to be updated. Amanda has attended modeling workshops and has taken part in science curriculum mapping for the district. Amanda has embraced new learnings, challenged our current curriculum, and continuously explores new ideas about science instruction. I have witnessed her enthusiasm for science and her dedication to ensure students are provided with innovative instruction. I have found her to be a hardworking, intelligent, personable, and caring teacher. Amanda provides high-quality instruction every day and is always available to students and parents who need support. She is consistently prepared, reliable, and motivated to achieve. When she encounters resistance to change, she faces these challenges with persistence and determination. She doesn't give up easily. She is able to listen to others' ideas, evaluate them based on her personal values, and then respectfully, yet firmly state her opinions. I would like to congratulate her on reaching tenure status. The next one is from Michelle LeBlanc, and this letter was written by Amanda Paloukas. She said, Michelle LeBlanc has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty. She has tirelessly worked to create a nurturing and inclusive learning environment where every student feels valued, supported, and empowered to succeed. Her innovative teaching methods and genuine care for her students have left an indelible mark on the hearts and minds of all who have had the privilege of learning from her. I'd like to congratulate her on achieving tenure status within twenty-two. And that's all we have.
Fantastic. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Member Westra to lead celebrating success tonight. I hope it's not a surprise.
Did she whisper?
I hope so.
I'm very excited by this one. This evening, the Board of Education will once again celebrate our school community with an Extra Mylar Award to an amazingly talented and determined science teacher at Starkweather Academy, Melissa Darnell. Melissa Darnell is known to be a great coworker. She always makes herself available to support her students and fellow staff members. She has attended conferences and meetings over the summer to improve her curriculum and instructions and constantly works after hours to improve her assessment in class to better meet the needs of her students. She also brainstorms new fun ideas for the science program and challenges herself every day to support her students' education. Melissa is passionate about learning and wants her students to walk away with critical thinking and problem-solving skills. She provides advice to her coworkers when needed and is very open to suggestions and feedback. It is said that she is someone people can count on and is always ready to help her students and staff. At this time, I would like to invite Kristal Rosolantavo, sorry if I spelled your name wrong, science teacher at Canton High School, who nominated Melissa for this award, and Kevin Lane, principal at Starkweather Academy, to say a few words.
Good evening. So Melissa is a passionate teacher who is truly committed to her students' success. She is constantly looking for new ideas to engage her students and goes above and beyond to create a truly positive and inclusive learning environment for her students. Melissa is not only an educational rock star, but also an amazing colleague. She is someone you can count on for support and is a wonderful thought partner. I'm grateful to work with Melissa. She is an exceptional educator and a fantastic colleague. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to have this opportunity to talk a little bit about Melissa. She's been with us, I don't know how many years, ten, eleven, twelve years, something like that. She was a very strong, good teacher when she came to us, but watching her growth over the time she's been with us has been incredible. And one of the things that we talk about at Starkweather is being student-centered, and we'll talk in the presentation later about student voice. She listens to her students, watches what they do, and adjusts her teaching to make sure that they are learning. One of the struggles with all students, especially today, is getting them to really engage in learning, not just getting something done, so I can get the grade. She's really been successful in getting students to learn, creating a strong, positive learning environment within her classroom, and it's just been incredible to watch her growth and her leadership that she's taking on more and more within our school and within the district, spreading the good work that Starkweather does throughout the district. So Melissa, thank you so much. I know I don't say it enough, but we really appreciate having you, and congratulations on this well-deserved award.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Melissa Darnell with the Mary Beth Carol Extra Mylar Award for always going above and beyond for her students and staff of PCCS.
Not big into public speaking, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations to Melissa for well-deserved reward.
All right. Thank you, Member Westra. All right, next up is the President's Report. Just one item for the President's Report this evening. So just as a reminder, as the Board gets emails from the community, our practice is that the Board President will ultimately respond to those emails. I've talked to the leadership colleagues, if you will, Member Kehoe, Members Sedu, and then also Vice President Christensen. And what we decided to do is to tweak that practice a little bit. Each president operates that a little bit different, how they respond to emails. Some, you know, some presidents, they, you know, schedule their email responses. Not naming any names. But everyone, you know, look, at the end of the day, we have full-time jobs, so everybody has to ultimately determine what's the best way for them to respond. So there's a couple of things. One, earlier this year, Member Christensen and myself asked Dr. Merritt to jump in when she sees that there's an email to the Board, or I'm sorry, an email that doesn't specifically address it to the Board, and it's clearly an administrative issue. Because the truth is, ninety percent of the emails that we get at Board really is administrative, and we end up bringing in Dr. Merritt to answer those questions anyways. And so we've asked her to step up from that standpoint and just give her a green light to feel free to jump in, right, and answer those. The second piece is that I've asked my colleagues to help rotate on a quarterly basis. It can get, you know, a little overwhelming at times to receive all the emails, once again, especially with full-time jobs. And my job specifically at this moment is really, really going to the next level as far as my time commitment. And so they graciously stepped up and said that we'll rotate on a quarterly basis. So just letting the full Board know that moving forward, we'll rotate on a quarterly basis. I just happened to get the first quarter of the year, so my quarter is done. And Member Kehoe has agreed to take the second quarter. It's funny how that works. Member Kehoe has agreed to jump in for the next quarter, and then we'll announce who will be stepping in from that moment. So once again, I appreciate you guys for stepping up to help make that happen, and I'll open it up for any questions from the Board at this moment. No? All right, well, that would do it for the President's Report. Next up is Members Sedu, Treasurer Sedu, no, not Treasurer, Secretary Sedu.
Oh, no, don't give me that title.
No, sir. SPA Committee.
I'm actually going to punt this over to Trustee Westra, since she led that last meeting.
Okay, good evening. The SPA Committee, the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, last met on April 3rd at 5:00 in this room. During that session, we had a presentation from the high school program highlights, which you will see tonight, and I think we had a spirited discussion about what was being presented and had a lot of good questions. We also covered the new middle school math curriculum materials request, which I'm very excited about, and I think that's coming to the Board in the next meeting. And then we also had a session on future student performance and achievement agenda topics that we'd like to cover, and I think the list is down. But we have quite a lengthy list of topics that we'd like to understand more about and learn more about. Our next meeting is, will be May 1st at 5:00 PM in this room. Everyone is welcome to attend, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Policy Committee with Member McCoyn.
So we have actually not met since our last meeting. So we will be meeting, however, Tuesday, April 23rd, which is in two weeks from tonight. We meet down the end of this in the collaboration space. We meet at 5:30. Everybody is welcome to attend.
Thank you, Member McCoyn. FNO with Treasurer Kehoe.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, April 4th, at 5:00 PM here in this room, and we had a review of a number of things that will be on the agenda this evening, including the Hoben Elementary Site Drainage Project, the water easement for the third high school stadium, and the Salem High School chiller repair. We also had a great discussion on the upcoming bid awards that will be, or bids that are going out for the Robotics and Innovation Hub that will be added at Canton High School. That's going out to bid now, and will start construction, I believe, in the fall, if I remember correctly, as part of that process, assuming the bids and everything gets approved. We also reviewed our key performance indicators for transportation and custodial. With respect to custodial, one of the things that we've discussed is they do an audit of the clean each day throughout the district, and they have a number of different surveys that they do across that process. And in general, we're seeing pretty good results from that clean at the beginning of the day. One of the things that we've asked is to have additional audits that are done during the lunch periods at high school, because it's one of the areas that we've seen some specific challenges, in particular around the bathrooms there. It's an area that we've seen some big concerns with, and it's an area that we've heard a lot of feedback from the community around that process. And our custodial team, as well as the administration, are going to work to see, to measure that process and then come forward with suggestions on how they can improve the clean during the midday process, not just at the beginning of the day after the custodians have been there. The last thing was, we also reviewed the monthly financial statements through the end of February 29th. And we have our next FNO meeting on Thursday, April 18th, 5:00 PM here in this room, and again, we welcome the community to come.
Thank you very much. Student Voice in Action Committee with Mr. Patterson.
So at our last SVA meeting a bit ago, we tasted new food, menu items brought to SVA by the PCCS Food and Nutrition Services, which were all really, really good. We also made and posted posters for the middle schools and high schools in PCCS to gather student feedback regarding the student dress code. And I'm proud to announce, we got over 1,300 replies from students throughout the district. Yay! And our next SVA meeting is May 1st at 5:00 PM in the Canton Media Center. I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Josh. All right, on to administrative reports, recommendations. First up is the Superintendent's Report, where she's going to share all the amazing things that are happening in PCCS.
Thank you, President Wilson, and you teed that up perfectly as we're entering this fourth quarter. I have such incredible news of our students' accomplishments that I would like to share tonight. We just wrapped up math is, a month is, I'm sorry, March is reading month, tongue-tied. And I definitely just want to begin by recognizing the hard work of all of our staff and our community partners that really helped us to highlight with our young readers the importance of reading during this month. I want to give a special shout-out to the Plymouth Township Police Department, whose officers visited several of our buildings to read to students as a part of their department's Books and Badges Program. Officers visiting classrooms spent about thirty minutes in each class, reading and answering questions. And definitely, we'd like to highlight programs such as Books and Badges, because they highlight the importance of our community partnerships, and they're a shining example of the strong partnerships that we're proud of to have with our local law enforcement, so we're thankful for them. PCEP Student Radio Station 881 The Park was named Michigan's Association of Broadcasters High School Station of the Year. Let's clap it up for that station. Our student staff of 881 The Park, whose commitment to broadcasting excellence saw 881 named the Michigan Associations of Broadcasters 2024 High School Radio Station of the Year at the MAB Students Broadcast Award Celebration on March the 18th. This year's honor is the seventh straight year that 881 has been named Michigan's Top High School Radio Station. The students dominated this year's Student Broadcast Awards. PCEP students received 21 out of 45 total awards presented at the high school radio station category, including six, that's right, six first-place awards out of 15 categories. The competition is judged by radio industry professionals from commercial stations and radio networks around the state. So again, we congratulate our young student staff of 881. In addition, we'd like to give a shout-out to our PCEP Culinary Team, when they had a strong showing most recently at the state competition. Their PCEP Culinary Arts Program competitive teams recently had their Pro Start State Hospitality Competition in Kalamazoo. The program's management team took home the state championship and has qualified for this year's National Pro Start Competition in Baltimore later this month. Congratulations are also in order for the award-winning culinary team, who finished second in this year's competition, one year after winning last year's national championship. The accolades continue as we highlight and recognize the award-winning PCEP Lightning Robotics Team. They continued its tradition of success after the program reached the semifinal round at last week in state robotics competition. Lightning Robotics advanced to the state competition after dominating their district event, finishing as district champions with a perfect 17-0 record. The team also received the prestigious First Impact Award at the district competition. The Impact Award is the most prestigious award at first competitions. It honors a team that represents a model for other teams to emulate. So a strong showing of our robotics students. And the accolades continue. PCEP Video Students named finalists in a nationwide distracted driving video contest. These are our students from Janet Sutherland's Advanced Video Production Classes at PCEP, and they were named finalists in the Nationwide Courageous Persuaders Video Competition. Now, this competition sees students use their talents to create 30-second television commercials promoting safe driving. Entries could cover topics including impaired driving, distracted driving, and passenger empowerment. Entries are judged by middle school students across the country to gauge their effectiveness at reaching younger audiences. Our PCEP students shine at Science and Humanities Competition. So one of PCEP's newest clubs has already made its marks after members of the Science and Engineering Fair Club had strong showing at local competitions. In February, the club sent four members to Wayne State University to compete at the Michigan Junior Science and Humanity Symposium. Daruz Hedge of Salem High School won first place and a $2,500 scholarship to a college of his choosing, and Daruti Patabi of Canton High School won second place and a $1,000 scholarship to a college of her choosing. Both students have been invited to compete in the national finals of the competition this spring. In March, the same club sent three members to the Science and Engineering Fair in Metro Detroit. Tesco Shiganti of Canton High School placed top 50 in the competition and was invited to the state-level competition. He additionally won one of six prestigious grand awards and was invited to compete in the international-level competition, which will be held in Los Angeles, California in May. Daruti Patabi of Canton High School placed top 50 as well and was invited to the state-level competition, and she also won an award from the American Psychological Association and an honorable mission from the Society of Women Engineers, and she took first place in the incredibly competitive computational biology category. Congratulations to all of these outstanding students on their hard work and their success. I also want to thank our incredible staff, who continue to nurture and provide environments in order for our students to thrive. Just a quick shout-out for kindergarten registration for our community. It is now open for the 2024-25 school year. I'm so happy to announce that, and you see all these accolades of our students who would not want their young person to be a part of this incredible educational experience. So kindergarten registration is open for all students living within the district boundaries. We both, we offer both traditional kindergarten, as well as young fives, for students who will turn five years old on or before December the 1st. For more information, please visit our website at PCCSK12.com. And I'll close out today just with a reminder that our Schools of Choice applications window will close on April the 13th. That is a reminder that the seats are open to students in kindergarten through 10th grade. Students living in Wayne, Washtenaw, Macomb, Oakland, and Monroe Counties are eligible to apply. Again, for more information, please check out our website at PCCSK12.com. So one more round of applause for these amazing. The Mental Health Fair, thank you so much for that reminder, is coming up on April the 27th. That will be Saturday in Kellogg Park. This is our third annual Mental Health Fair. I think that we're over 100 community partners, mental health providers. It is a great opportunity within our community to come together, to see all of the resources and the supports that are available for students and community members. It is open to all. We're so proud of the work, the leadership under Dr. Vartanian Gibbs in the Office of Family and Student Engagement. It is a phenomenal community event, and we encourage everyone to be involved. Remove that stigma when you think about mental health. It's something that we absolutely talk about and we embrace and we support here in Plymouth Canton Community School. So thank you for that reminder, and we want to invite everyone to come out. Final plug, with all of this good news, it's hard to fit all of the good news within 12 pages, but I do want to alert all that our second edition of the Plymouth Canton Community Press, that's our magazine, will be coming to print by the end of this month. So look out for these continued accolades of our students and staff, and that should be in your mailboxes before the end of this month.
Fantastic. Outstanding report, Dr. Merritt. Thank you for that. All right, Teaching and Learning, Beth Rail.
Yep, and it's my pleasure to introduce to you Hal Hurd, Executive Director of High School Education, who's going to lead the high school team in sharing some high school highlights from this past year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hurd.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Dr. Merritt and members of the Plymouth Canton Community School Board. Tonight, the high school principals, Martine Barbie, one of our assistant principals, and I are excited to share some highlights from our PCCS high school programming through the 2023-24 school year that support the PCCS Dynamic Plan and the Alerted Profile. Our highlights will focus on a sense of belonging, student engagement, culture and climate. Also, we'll provide an update on career and technical education programming and its connection to the Student Engagement and Innovation Dynamic Plan. Our efforts align with the PCCS Dynamic Plan goals, particularly Goal D, incorporating student voice and input throughout the educational experience. At the high school level, we developed a common high school vision in 2021 through developing or reviewing the district mission, vision, and belief statements in our PCCS Dynamic Plan. And this vision helps guide our team in developing our focus areas for each school year. Our common high school vision is for all students to have equitable access to a positive school culture, be supported in a safe and diverse environment, become strong, independent, and adaptive learners, achieving excellence through the high school experience and beyond. And on our next slide, our logic model. Our purpose is to incorporate student input to increase achievement, belonging, engagement, and a positive school culture. And you see some of our inputs that are listed there on the left. Highlighted things such as the student feedback groups, some of the activities increase student voice through those groups and leadership. And some of the outputs we expect are more student buy-in, equitable practices as well. And some of the desired outcomes, increase student achievement for all, a safe, valued environment. By amplifying school student voice, also looking at professional development and implementing interventions, we'll create an inclusive and supportive school, fostering success for every student. So next, we're going to dive into the specific program highlights focusing on a sense of belonging, student engagement, and culture and climate. I will now turn it over to Kevin Lane, who's the principal of Starkweather Academy, to share some highlights around student voice throughout our four high schools.
Thank you, Hal. So student voice is something, of course, that's extremely important, because if you want students to do better, what better way to do that than to listen to the students and how to serve them better, what their needs and desires are. We've made efforts to involve students more in decision-making process through feedback groups. It was mentioned earlier by Josh. Feedback groups on mascots, policy, hiring, boundwork, school climate and culture, and food choices. Learned about that today. Students have also taken active roles in organizing activities, events, spirit. Students have also taken active roles in organizing activities, events, spirit weeks, and leadership initiatives. You see in the pictures and the photos here, in the top left is AP Psychology students talking with a psychologist, a nurse manager, student voice, what mental health supports are working and what's needed. The top middle, Senior Sunrise Student-Led Initiative, brought to administration and staff. Top right is student artwork. That's from Starkweather. I'm really excited about our student artwork. If you've been to Starkweather, you see murals all over the building that have been done by students for many, many years. One thing that started at the end of last year and continued this year is some of our more artistic students, artistically talented students, do the outlines, and then some of our students who really wanted to be involved in that and maybe even had the initial idea will fill in, do kind of the coloring in, so they can be involved and they can create things themselves as well and see themselves throughout the building. And that's just been a great, a great thing this year. We have the bottom left, the first Powderpuff Football Tournament, first Powderpuff Tournament? I'm sorry, Powder Buff Tournament, excuse me. Boys volleyball tournament, fourteen teams. They've been asking to have this tournament for a couple of years, so they had a lot of fun, and each team had their own theme and team name, and there was a huge crowd involved in that. In the bottom middle, high school students participating in the Women's Summit in Grand Rapids. And in the bottom right, the student-led symposium, Facing Race, Real Talk. Some examples since I'm here and I'm from Starkweather, we have a student voice committee that's been meeting very regularly this year at Starkweather, and some of the things that came out of that were the creation of a Black Student Union at Starkweather, increasing school cleanliness. Students were complaining about how dirty the bathrooms were, and so we talked about and strategized, and they went from class to class and talked to students about, you know, let's try and make it cleaner. We worked with custodial staff on what, you know, expectations and how to strategize to get more cleaning done. And between those efforts and student-led efforts, there was definitely a big difference and improvement in the cleanliness of our bathrooms. Students working with our social workers to create a Zen space within our social work area, creating talent presentations as opposed to a talent show. It was decided that we're going to set up a sign-up so students can show their talents. Whoever wants to can show their talents during the lunch hour to other students. The tip of the day, mental health tip of the day is part of our daily life at Starkweather. And then we've had, part of it shown is the record sales, the pride in our school, record sales of our Stark Shark gear, which is kind of transitioning over into Sharkweather gear. That's new this year. And then we look forward in twenty-four, twenty-five, through student and family engagement, we were connected with the Be Nice Program, which is a mental health awareness, very student-led and culture-building process, and we're really excited for that opportunity in the coming year. And next will be Canton Principal David Reed Norwalk.
Thank you, everyone. So it's really exciting to share, and you even saw in some of the highlights what we can do with student engagement at the park and with Starkweather. It's vital for learning to have engagement, as well as you have to, having that engagement is so important for a sense of belonging and being a part of the school. And we can do something with our four high schools that really nobody else can do. And the first thing you see is just in our course offerings. Our catalog is huge, over eighty pages, and we go toe-to-toe with anybody with the classics. We have Survey Humanities, we have AP this and that, but we also have Empowering Women in Automotive. We have Hospitality Services, Culinary, our IB Program, our academies, an amazing offering to provide engagement for students and really activate that passion. But another hallmark at the park is, and at Starkweather, is that the kids are also involved, and they're doing things hands-on. So we have nearly a hundred clubs, and they have an incredible range, and we have the things like our student leadership and our student council, where you become part of governing and really what leadership looks like, but then other things that are just part of their passions, like we have a Warriors for Healthy Mind, and they go around making messages in a homeroom hangout to help students feel, get those positive messages about mental health, but also feel like they belong. And so being a part of something is another challenge that we give to our students. Having your passions activated, that's one thing. Giving back and being involved is another. So you see from just a smattering, really, also thank you for, Dr. Merritt, for the superintendent's message there, the report, we achieve at high levels because we also have high engagement, and we have so many different offerings and so many students at the park that you really get to see a high level of performance. So here's NHS in the upper left-hand corner. Our NHS group was doing a, providing foods, and it's a Kids Coalition Against Hunger. We did over twenty thousand meals. So it's one thing to have great grades, it's another thing to have a great community, and that's one of the things that we really instill in our students. We have STEM Academy, like our four academies are just incredible. Some places have a STEM class or a CTE class. We have full academies. They're doing their capstone presentation here, and it's really groundbreaking what the students are doing. I was watching one code and create an entire computer just out of spare parts on his own. We have a comics club, like one of our classes, a comics and a graphic novels class, so being a part of it, being interested, bringing your interest to what you do there. The, kind of the, what created the Powder Buff is the Powderpuff we have there, where it's a nice fundraiser and a really good engagement for the students. We also had at the KLA Conference, our students led a mental health symposium, and they did a project and a presentation on that at the KLA Conference. And then you see students leading a breakout session where they can do the talking. So like in our school, in our classrooms, we really challenge the students to be active participants and really to be engaged with the learning. And it's, like I said, it's something that I do not believe can be provided anywhere but at the park because we have such wonderful offerings and such a great staff and great group of students.
Next, we see on the next slide will be Kim Villarosa, the principal of Salem High
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and talk to you just a little bit about sense of belonging. One of the things that I know as a principal, and I also know as a parent, is it's super important for students to feel like they have a sense of belonging at their school. And so what we are always doing and looking to do more of at the park is provide as many opportunities as possible for our students to really feel a sense of belonging when they come to school, and we're always looking for new ways to reach all of our students and help all of our students feel that way. In our upper-left corner, we have art students that had the opportunity to use chalk art outside school to raise awareness of some social issues and some things that were important to them while also displaying their skills as artists. In the center, that was a really great opportunity. We had our students that are part of our Chinese language program had the opportunity this year for the first time to create a National Honor Society just for, not just for students, but for students that were part of the Chinese program. You don't have to actually be a student of Chinese descent, but it is specifically for students that are part of our Chinese language learning program. So this was their very first induction ceremony. This just took place in the last month, and it was really, really exciting to be a part of. On the upper right, we have our extravaganza. We have an eighth-grade extravaganza every year, and we invite all of our students to, our incoming ninth graders, to be a part of this, and they, in the Salem cafeteria, all of the activities are represented, or as many as we possibly can, with advisors, with students to talk to the incoming eighth grade, or incoming ninth-grade students that are currently eighth-grade students, to share with them anything that they may be interested in. They get to sign up, and then they will be contacted later to try to join. In addition, in each of our home buildings at the park, we have athletics represented. So if students are interested in athletics, they can talk with coaches and current athletes. On the bottom left, we have students participating in a community service project. In the center, we have our most recent, most recent picture that we did out on the football field, and instead of the last time we did it, we called it Three Students, One Park. This time, we've referred to it as Three Students, One Home. Because what we do know is that for some students, school is better than home. For other students, they would almost rather be at home than at school, and then we have students that fall all the way in the middle. And so we need to try to make it a great place for students, no matter where they sit in that space. And then the, in the bottom right, we have an example of our homeroom hangout. That's something that students created, that they do periodically during homeroom, just to give kids a break, to do something, to break up their school day, not necessarily academic, but to socialize and connect with each other. So those are just some of the examples of things that we're doing to try to bring a sense of belonging to students. We know this is an ongoing thing, that we need to continue to find ways to reach all of our students and help them feel like they really belong at our high schools. So thank you, and Mr. Greg Anglin, the Plymouth principal, is going to follow me.
Good evening, everyone. So I have the opportunity to talk about climate and culture. First, I'll start off with some of the images that you see on the slide. So first, we'll start off with Student Voice in Action. Josh Patterson, how you doing, Josh? Right here in the flesh for us. We also have obviously an image of him there, highlighting some of the bond work that we have going on in our schools amongst our campus across the district, really highlights the experiences that we're able to provide for our students. In the top right, we have our College and Career Fair, which is a great opportunity. It was actually on the same night as the eighth-grade extravaganza, but it was, I had an opportunity to stop by there. It was a really great offerings, many universities there, many parents were pleased and students were pleased to have the opportunity as well. Additionally, in the middle, the bottom middle there, we have our High School Assembly with Chris Heron. If you're familiar with his story, he was there last year. Very empowering story, very great message for our students, just around perseverance, battling addiction, and, you know, how to push through. So really great opportunity for our students. And then additionally, we have on our bottom right, students creating a signage for No Place for Hate Initiative. We actually had them in the fall, which was a great experience. All three of the principals got to have BMX, professional BMX riders, do wheelies over our head and in front of the entire student body, excuse me, in front of the entire student body. And then Mr. Lane already highlighted the image in the bottom-left corner there. So these are just some of the things that, you know, happen at the park that we want to highlight. But I think when we talk about student voice, student engagement, and sense of belonging, all of these things can't happen without the climate and culture that we provide for our students. So when we're talking about our climate and culture, one of the key things that I want to talk about is firstly, the shared expectations that we offer for our students. So at the beginning of every year, we have a great opportunity to engage with our students at all three buildings and Starkweather as well with our class meetings. So it's the first week of school, you get to meet the freshmen, the sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and you really get to come together, establish the expectations, and really let them know how they can be supported throughout the school year, which I think is super, super important. So we all get on the same page, and throughout the year, we have opportunities to check in, whether administratively going through classrooms, our counseling team connects with students throughout the year as well, just to reiterate, check in and see where more support may be needed. Additionally, I think for all of the things that you've seen before I was able to come up, all of the opportunities we offer, I think you have to recognize that our culture provides a supportive environment. So students have to feel safe. They have to feel, you may have caught on to a lot of the things that happened that were highlighted, where students came to us and said, hey, these are things we would like to do, and we really have to cultivate that environment for that to happen. So how do we promote a supportive environment for students to be academically and socially and emotionally safe? Right now, we have homeroom, which you heard some of the homeroom experiences, but I think that's a really great opportunity for students to get academic support. It's also an opportunity for students to engage and come together and meet and discuss ideas. Additionally, you heard made mention of each of our counseling centers has a Zen room for students to have support. They're able to go in and kind of reset and, you know, really, if they're having a rough time, they have a place to check in where they know they can be supported, which I think is super, super important. Another aspect that was also brought up was we have over one hundred active clubs and activities in our high schools, which I think is super, super important for students to find other people with like ideas, like attainments such as themselves, and I think that offers an environment of support. Lastly, what I want to highlight is the community aspect that we have in our high schools. I think you see that with a lot of the initiatives and all of the images that you've seen, but I think that's super important, that we cultivate an environment where students have community. Some of those examples are the numerous opportunities we have. Our upperclassmen do Link Crew every year for our freshman students, so this is an opportunity for them to welcome in the freshmen. It's a big production. It's a really great environment, just seeing the upperclassmen kind of really get into it and really make the, you know, the wide-eyed freshmen really like, okay, I think I can acclimate, and it gives them a familiar face once they get there to the park. So I think that's super important and is a part of our culture. You've seen it throughout the images in the different areas we've highlighted, just the opportunity for collaboration, truly a community effort amongst our students. There's numerous opportunities where different clubs and organizations come together to support. There's numerous opportunities where, you know, right now, you know, SJ 5K is getting started. Students are helping to plan that, helping to promote that. So I think these are all super important things, and so when we talk about student voice, student engagement, and sense of belonging, it really is attributed to the climate and culture that we're able to offer and support with our students. And so that will conclude my portion, and I'll hand things over to Mr. Hurd, and I think he'll introduce Mrs. Barbie.
All right. So now we're going to transition over to our focus on our, on career and technical educational opportunities. Tonight, we have Ms. Martine Barbie, who oversees our career and technical education department.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Martine Barbie. I am an assistant principal at the park. I have the pleasure of overseeing, oh, am I not there? Sorry. He's a little taller than I am. I have the pleasure of overseeing career and technical education and business programs at the park. I promised the kids that I would go through real quick because, speaking of student belonging and engagement and innovation, I can tell you, but they will be much better at it. So I am going to go through really quickly some of the things that we offer in career and technical education. So I say by the numbers because that's a quick way to show you. We have fifteen programs. We service two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine students currently at the park. We oversee two of the academies, two departments, business and CTE. We have four national championship teams, and we service all three high schools. In addition to that, I don't, oh, there we go. Our fifteen programs, a little bit about that, how we determine what we're going to teach and what we offer at the park is all through student voice. At the end of every semester, our CTE leadership meets with what we call our CTE ambassadors. We ask for volunteers and suggestions from teachers, from someone from each of the programs to come talk to us. Normally, we could get a group of kids from each program to come talk to us about what's gone well, what they liked in their programming. We focus on seniors since they most of the time have been through all four years, and we ask them to give us feedback. What do you wish you would have learned? What did you like that you've done here? What can we do better? And they're real honest. So that has helped us build things like the Business Academy and the Marketing Capstone and Pathway, all based on student voice. The fifteen programs, you can visit at any time. The focus for the academies, the STEM Academy, one aspect is we support the cybersecurity pathway as well as the computer science pathway. That, again, came from student voice. They told us what they wanted, so we made it happen. There's a huge drive in industry right now in computer science, so it's very beneficial, as well as the Business Academy, with a focus on marketing. What we're hearing now from kids is that they want a finance and investment component, so that will be coming for your approval next. Part of our curriculum requires students in career and technical education. They're automatically leaders, but we all have student leadership organizations. Everything from culinary, auto tech, cybersecurity, they all can culinary, auto tech, cybersecurity, they all compete, they all compete at a state and national level, oftentimes they win. So just, just a couple of ours listed there, I'm trying to go fast. Some special events, we're big on community engagement, obviously, our purpose is to, is to filter students into the workforce and into college and career readiness pathways. So we offer four CTE, a lot of community events, the Antique Car Show is super fun, it's held in September, if you ever want to come out, it's, they've started bringing their dogs now too, and they're in the old school cars, it's driven by Henry Ford, so they come from Dearborn, and it takes a very long time for them to drive the old Model T from Dearborn to Canton. But we also do a showcase that's open to the community. One of our great opportunities is the alumni reunion for STEM. Students who have graduated come back and have dinner and talk about their experience, and every year, we get over 100 kids to come back from college, typically 150, since we've started, and it's their sense of community and belonging that brings them back every time. It's a wonderful event, if you can ever join. I don't know what I have next, am I done? Okay. Also, again, with internships, scholarships, and mentorships, and you'll hear the students talk a little bit about the scholarships offered with their competitions, being out in the community, visiting hospitals, we support the elementary schools with our educational careers course as well. I promise I be quick. Okay, student experience, this is the best part. So I have with me, Matt, I see, I had to write down their names because I called them Maddie and Charlie, but Madeline White and Charlie Salowich. Close? Okay. They're going to talk to you about our culinary program and what their experience has been.
Hello, my name is Charles Salowich, I've been a part of the culinary program for two years, I'm a senior at Canton, and I have been competing for the culinary team and individual for two years. I can say personally, for me, this has been one of the greatest experiences I have ever been a part of in high school. It has definitely ignited my passion for culinary arts and paved the way to my future career in this industry. In the program, we take a lot of pride in what we do, and we serve almost 100 teachers' students a day in our restaurant, and we grow together as a team and as a family in that class. And, you know, all of our, through our equipment and our facilities, they're a little old, but we make it work, and through a cloud of smoke, we are able to serve and produce wonderful food that is on just a higher level, it is much more fine dining essentially as you can get on this level. We learn a lot about what food is, where it comes from, how to respect multiple different cultures and places around the world through culinary arts. I guess I can talk about competing a little bit. I have competed on all levels, and I have won and I have lost on all levels. And through that, the connections that you make to the real world are incredible, and I have met a lot of great people and a lot of great chefs. I have over $200,000 in scholarships, which is a great thing for me. Which, for me and my other teammates, it is a great way for us to ensure our future in this industry, and we, we hope that we can keep doing this for years to come, because it is a great way for students to learn real life experiences in a work industry, and they can get such skills as leadership, they can get a sense of, a sense of pride in the things that they create themselves, team bonding, learning to work with other people that you think you wouldn't have been able to become friends with in the beginning. And it creates a sense of urgency and a new sense of how to get work done more efficiently and faster. So it is a great program, I am proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
I can't really top what he said, but, my name is Madeline White, I'm a senior at Canton High School, and this is my first year in the culinary program, first year doing any competitions, and I'm very fortunate for everything I've learned in the course. This has opened up a variety of new possibilities in a way that actually seem achievable now, so, you know, always having like a restaurant as a kid, like, you want to be like a princess, now I can actually be that princess, so that's nice. This, you know, the, what you said, this is a family, our chef Woodward, I think that's the most important part to me, is just the connections I've made through her, the networking I've done through the competitions I've competed in. It's a, it's a wonderful program, so I, any kid I've met, like a underclassman, how should I rope them in? Because you don't realize what you're missing out if you're not in this program, so.
Do you have any questions for the students before we let them go?
Charlie, can you tell us how big that cloud of smoke was that you referenced? Was there, did fire alarms go off? Can you just dig into that a little bit?
Funny you say that, the, so during our restaurant service, we serve through all three lunches, and, well, our hood ventilation system doesn't work as well as it should, and, you know, our hotline produces the bulk of everything on our menu, and it's supposed to go up into the hoods and then just out, but instead, it bounces right back out into the kitchen, and at some points, you can't even see from end to end of the room, and it leaves kids, it's, it's, it's a, it's a problem in the kitchen, and it leaves kids short of breath, lightheaded, but again, it's that sense of pride and urgency that they, they power through it, because even for kids unlike me, that, you know, they don't have a passion or don't plan on pursuing it, they care, they care about what they make and what they are creating for customers that come to this place to eat and just have that time off, and it's a sense of pride, so they power through it, and it's, it's quite a miraculous thing to see.
Yeah, the smoke isn't coming from the kids' air, it's from the ventilation system.
And Charlie, that's, that's at Salem, correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Patrick, member Keigho took notes, job well done. Any other questions?
No, except I'll be looking at the availability of the restaurant, and we'll be making an appointment.
Are there reservations that we can make?
Yes, there are.
Yes, there are.
We can go together.
All right, thank you guys, good job.
What other questions might you have for us?
Yeah, well, I just want to thank you all for the presentation, I don't, it's, there's so many programs and things that you can talk about within such a short, distilled presentation, so, you know, thank you for opening our eyes to a lot of what is going on at all four of our high schools. I have a question around, and this is more of a bridge program to, to, to college, can you speak a little bit about our early middle college? I know we didn't touch on that during this presentation.
So our early middle college, I know we've been discussing it for a number of years, and it's coming online this upcoming year with opportunities for students to attend one pathway through Schoolcraft College, and also another pathway through Washington College, depending on the program that you would like to join. You know, and it also depends on the grade level as well, starting with those students that are in 10th grade, and then some students that are in 11th grade that'll be starting, and then also concluding with that 13th year, depending on their particular programming. And I think we've had some great opportunities with Schoolcraft, I think everyone's been aware about the opportunity that we have with Schoolcraft and how that can impact our students as well. And for Washington, hopefully they get it next year, that would be great as well, so we're looking to, we've recently had like an open house for that, and kind of a question and answer with Amanda Pelukas overseeing that, and we've had a great number, I want to say, I don't remember the exact number of students that were present, or families that were present, but it was a, it was a high number at that particular night, and we're going through the process now where students are applying and able to see who's going to be accepted into the program for next year.
Yeah, and just to add to that, for those who don't know, the early middle college is, is a way for our high school students to earn college credit at no cost as they're making their pathway through the high school program.
Yep, it's a five-year program, and students will graduate with a high school diploma as well as either an associate's degree or a industry certification in, in an area, you know, like some places have industry certification instead of an associate's degree or a combination, as well as the programs both have the Michigan Transfer Agreement, which takes college credits into, into a four-year degree as well.
Thank you.
Please.
Go on, which.
Yep, we'll go this way.
I just have a question, what, what is a Zen Room? And what is, what makes it a Zen Room?
So that, Zen Room is actually just the name of it, but it's actually kind of a, better described as like a reset room. So you may, for instance, I may be having some, you know, we talk about mental health, and we talk about, you know, giving opportunities for students to reset themselves, so this is a place where students may be able to go in and calm themselves down, there may be a time where they just need to kind of sit for a few minutes, for some students, it may be looking at, I guess when I was growing up, brain teaser type of activities to kind of get them reconnected, refocused back into school, and it may be also a time where they may have some one-on-one time talking to their counselor or another trusted adult that they seek out of school.
Is there a reason why it's called a Zen Room, though? I mean, like what inspired the name of Zen Room, because that kind of stems into more of a Buddhist background, so I was just curious.
There wasn't any, like, you know, religious types of things or any, like, thought into that, like, you know, the naming of the Zen Room was just a particular room where they kind of, from my understanding, that's about peace and kind of settling and making sure you're becoming whole.
Well, that's still, you know, if the research of it is, stems from the Buddhist religion, so I was just curious why, why there was just that specific name to that, you know, place, instead of like, there's not a room for every different kind of faith, so I was just curious why, like a Buddhist Zen Room.
Yeah.
That's what I just wanted to find out what it was. Thank you.
All right, member McCoy?
Oh, okay. I really don't have any questions, but I really appreciated the highlighting all the programs. I think sometimes the community doesn't, isn't aware of all the opportunities our students have, and I'd really like to say thank you for making sure that the student voice is really being heard, and then the programs are being affected by what the students want, because that's really what we're here for, is what the students need to be successful as they go on. And so I go to, and some of the other board members, we go to things with other school board members, and a lot of districts, their, their students really don't have as many opportunities to be giving their voice to things, so I think it's so important to that sense of belonging and engagement, so thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Member Wester?
Just want to say thank you, being on the, on the SPA committee, we got, we got the, the long-form presentation of both the high school highlights and the CTE program, and both presentations were excellent in committee and as well as tonight, and I thank you for all of the hard work, there's a lot of really great things going on, and you've pushed a lot of it into 20 minutes, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wanted to commend you for bringing forth the breadth, depth, and diversity of the programs that we have at the, at the high school campus, I think that's one of the things that really came through loud and clear in this process, and how student voices were instrumental in every aspect of that, so it's, it's really great to see a place where everyone can belong, and I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
I won't reiterate what my board colleagues have said, so ditto to all of that in terms of student engagement and the importance of sense of belonging and culture and climate. So I've got a couple of questions in terms of looking at some students who are shy, who just haven't made that connection. How do you reach out to those students where they see all these opportunities, maybe they're overwhelmed, maybe they're shy, what efforts do you put into getting more students?
I can, if I can lean on my team, if you guys want to come on up and talk to that.
Thank you, it's always a challenge, you know, when you're trying to reach 6,000 students and you really want to include them, so the kids are also really an important process in that they have the connections, and some of that work that we do with the students is bringing buddies, having them come along, spreading word, we know one of the things that leads a lot of student decisions and scheduling is their friends' recommendations, so peer-to-peer conversations and encouragement is very strong in that one. And we also have it with staff, so one of the things that we try to instill in all our staff is who has a trusted adult, and can you be that trusted adult for the student? And our staff work really hard, they're one of the first ones typically to notice those quiet students who are more reserved and reach out and help encourage them as well, and that can open up students.
One of the other things I was going to add is that we really encourage students to, like, we have, well, close to 100 clubs and activities, but we also give them the opportunity to create their own. So let's say there's not a club or activity that really fits their interests, they are welcome to, they need a staff member that is willing to be their advisor, and then they work with their friends that may have similar interests, and they bring that forward to student congress, and then that comes to the administrators for approval. So even if maybe they, there's not something existing that they feel really comfortable in, we try to encourage them to then create something that they would be comfortable being a part of.
And I'll just, kind of the more formal entry points, I mentioned Link Crew, that's an opportunity for students to kind of get acclimated, get some familiar faces, kind of networking with seeing other students, or even learning who some of the upperclassmen are. Then also, there's more deliberate approaches with our counseling team, meeting with students and kind of having that opportunity to engage and kind of get to know students and get them to open up, as well as our wonderful staff, I think that's the probably, probably the best entry point when students are able to make that connection with their teachers.
Great, thank you.
I'll go briefly at Starkweather, a lot, we have a lot of students that are very shy and have a hard time coming forward, especially when they initially come to us, they've been struggling. So it was mentioned before the class meetings, so we don't do big class meetings, when we have information that we want to get to or get from the students, we go have the staff and leadership go class to class, so they're in a group of 15 to 20 students as opposed to a group of hundreds, to make sure they're more comfortable hearing that voice, and then each student is also assigned a, an advisor, in addition to the counselor that covers all the students, each student has an advisor that's another staff member, that's kind of their go-to person, and we switch that based on, you know, who that student is comfortable with, and, and within those meetings, they might not, might not be like, this is the best person for you, or, you know, we think this is the best person for you, but you've made a connection with this teacher over here, that would become their advisor.
Great. My last question is more about the conversations about improvements in culture and climate, so how are you measuring those improvements in culture, climate, and engagement?
So really, the, the more formal measurement would be our panorama data that we get from students when they take that survey, but I think kind of even impactful is the anecdotal, like having conversations with students. I know we all try to be visible, whether in the cafeteria, and when students see you and they know who you are, they're going to come up and they're going to say things, they're going to give their input, things they may not like, things that they're enjoying, but I think those are kind of the things, some of the data that we get, and we use that feedback to, you know, share with our staff at meetings, share with our departments when we get that information of, these are things that we can do to better support students or improve our culture, or even working with students like, well, that's a tough one, what do you think we can do better with that, and getting that feedback from them.
And we actually, we do inventory, so like we did administrative rounds this year in all the high schools where the administrative teams walk through, and we have, we evaluate things, and it's really for ourselves to talk about it, but it's, it's looking at what are we seeing in the climate and culture and sharing that. We have our Cognia review, and a big part of that is the climate and culture, so we have outside agencies coming from, to look at that, and we also have Katie Elch, part of our DEI program, so for our diversity, equity, and inclusion, she is walking around and also doing inventories and bringing outside group to go through our schools and really also like scientifically assess that. You can see it through posters, you can see it through examples of student voice, you can see it through the activity of students, and then empathy interviews, sitting down and talking to the students, and pulling those students from a wide range of backgrounds and talking to them about their experience, and it's really a constant pursuit, find as much information as we can about how it's going, and then when you see the students showing up in your building and seeing them in, in the displays and their activities and the building culture itself, that's also And then when you see the students showing up in your building and seeing them in, in the displays and their activities and the building culture itself, that's also a good sign to know that, that it's a strong culture. But ultimately, talking to the kids.
Thank you.
Is there, just a follow-up, is there a way for students to approach you rather than waiting for them to be approached by someone?
Well, we also create groups, yeah. So in terms of that, yeah, we have groups in that, we have a student senate, we have student leadership, and we have groups that we're continuing trying to make. And around that where we pull students in and like Josh Patterson brought up, like that group he's doing, we do the same thing where we reach out to students, say who's interested in this particular issue? And trying to get ahold of them. And the same thing with our staff, asking them to identify students to be a part of it. Like in the bond construction work we had, we reached out to staff and groups to have students to be a part of the feedback group around the seats, the, the color schemes, the use of place. And the feedback was phenomenal. I wasn't quite sure that, that the, the outside contractors were quite ready for it because the kids just said it straight and they said it great and gave real meaningful feedback. So in every way we can, get those students in there to be a part of it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
A follow-up question that kind of piggybacks on that is, you're getting great student feedback and then Charlie, student Charlie kind of prompted me to, to think about this is, how are, how are we aligning with industry? So if our, our ultimate goal is to build a pipeline, our students into industry, and I can see it in the presentation that industry is very involved, you can see that. But how do we ensure that the students are learning the most recent techniques, skills needed to, to be successful in industry? And then also, how are we making sure that we're keeping our facilities up to speed? So that they're learning on the, the most recent technology or in the, you know, in the most recent conditions that they're going to need as they actually go into industry?
The first thing, we're blessed to have our academies and especially the CTE. It has an entire program where we have to have an advisory board for each of the programs. And those are industry professionals who are giving us feedback. And then we also have to use industry standard rubrics and their learning standards. So that we are absolutely preparing them to the current standard of the curriculum and the content that they have there. And to the standard that the advisory board has. And so they, they have to be members, they're professionals, there are also students that are part of that, college students. So we really try to, we have to have a wide, kind of showing there. You hit the second thing that is really challenging, to be a standard, when you see a lot of industries, especially the auto industry, they're changing almost yearly. So we have great donations and partnerships. That's been a big part, Frank Ruggiero and the, and our communications department has helped us with, but we also have that through our CTE and STEM programming where we create a lot of partnerships and donations. We just received another donation from a company just today of $1,500 for, toward equipment. And that's a big piece of what we have to lean on. When you look at the amount of money that it takes, like a server for an entire cybersecurity program being the hundreds of thousands of dollars for that equipment. We have to have industry partners to be able to keep it up to speed. And the same thing is like 881 The Park, they have to do fundraisers and they do those community outreaches. But what's really cool is that's what the radio stations have to do. And so they're not just playing at a radio station, they are a radio station. And so the students very often are in a leadership role along with us, helping us do that work and then identifying what needs to be there. And then we work with our buildings. We are doing walks, we're going through every week, looking at the stuff that we have to have. The buildings age. And so there are things behind it that we have to stay on top of updating and making them as, as up-to-date as we possibly can. And, and so we, we do try to stay on top of that. But it's a cost that the community also needs to know is there because it's an incredible investment. We currently have students trained on industry-standard stuff and they're ready to step straight into the industry, like you saw in those career fairs. They come for our students. And so that is another great way that we get a lot of interest is showing those organizations what we have. And they, they come away wanting to give us some stuff to, because they want the kids to be top-notch trained.
All right. So I know we do need to move along, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Patterson for any last.
Just real briefly, it hasn't been, to my knowledge, communicated really well on how to like start a club. Because I know there are many like groups, like there's like a, a coding club that's trying to emerge, but they haven't like necessarily found how to. Is it possible that you could send out like a email to at least, at least PSEP on how to like create your own club? And I feel like that would also like spark some clubs forming.
And Josh is sitting down on one of the top challenges we have, like we, we, one of the best ways to talk to students is in person when we're there. But then like staff, oh, sorry, staff use email, students not so much. So we've been working on our communication with the students, how to keep them in line with stuff. But that's exactly one of the things that we want to be able to do is talk directly to students, get that feedback, and then have a line of communication with them. So Josh, absolutely. And there's other, you know, kind of common things from the students that we want to get to us that we can have that communication about some of those interests. Starting clubs, but also any of their other interests in it.
So obviously this is a hot topic, I know there's, I mean, we could probably go on for another hour. I would just say, you know, send an email to Dr. Merritt, any additional questions for the team? I'm sure they'll be happy to, to answer, but we've probably been at this a good 30 to 45 minutes at this point, so I am going to move us along. Thank you guys, great job.
Materials. So earlier this year or last year, we actually implemented the first half of the comprehensive K-5 ELA programming, which was what is known as Ufly. So you'll remember that we spent around $800,000-ish to implement our early literacy program to strengthen our structured literacy, especially at the K-1 and 2 level. So as the other part of that, because we also talked at that time how we had to accelerate part of the curriculum cycle to do that because it was so important at that moment. But this brings us back into the curriculum cycle as we look at the other kind of foundational pieces of our early literacy program. So over the past year and a half, our elementary teachers have revisited back into phases one and two of our curriculum cycle. And we've implemented and piloted programs to look at the remaining pieces of the literacy program. And I bring forth for you to have some conversation about, and tonight Kevin Carr, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Professional Development. I know I've got to stop writing these names because they're so long. And Jan Douglas, our K-12 Curriculum Coordinator are here to answer any questions when we get to that point. But this, what we're bringing forward is what is called collaborative classrooms, Being a Reader and Being a Writer as Curriculum Resources. We spent extensive time, not at this last SPA, but the SPA before that, diving into the materials. We brought examples of the materials and talked in-depth around this. This is a program that is what is known as educable, educative for our teachers, which means it helps them learn more deeply about literacy as they're teaching it. So there's a lot of curriculum resources, there's a lot of parent resources. This piece supports the language comprehension and writing development portions that mesh together with Ufly to make it a really strong structured program, K-5. The cost of this is pretty high when we talk about this, and I'm going to share where this money is coming from. Because as you know, we generally have about a million dollars a year for textbooks and curriculum resources and all of those things. So in total, the collaborative classroom, two pieces, Being a Reader is $1,081,445. And Being a Writer, the third edition, is $374,210. In total, this is $1,455,655. Now, this year, the Michigan Department of Education launched something called 35J Professional Development Curriculum and Supports Grant. Many districts across this state are using that to implement Ufly. We were ahead of the game and very innovative and stepped out and implemented that in the previous year. So we are able to use this grant to pay for this in total. So this would come entirely from the 35J grant. And we have already received initial approval from the Michigan Department of Education for this. The grant is around $2 million, which also includes professional development for teachers as well as the materials and resources, as well as some additional print resources for our classrooms as well. So I'm going to open it up to questions you might have, and then I'll also invite Kevin and Jan to answer any questions that you have that I can't answer myself as well. So what questions you might you have?
So we'll start with Mr. Patterson and then work to the right.
I had a question, but I can't think of it, so can we move on?
To the right of us. Member Wester.
Uh, no questions, we, as we've discussed this in SPA, I just want to say the faster we can get this, the better.
Can you give me some sense of how much materials we're getting for this? Again, I was really surprised at the, the dollar amount here, but I love the fact that it's a grant for it. But it's not clear whether we're getting one book or 50,000 books?
So it's quite an extensive set of materials. And a big part of that are books for kids. And one of the reasons that we chose this program was because our kids really, really responded well and made connections with the books throughout the, the curriculum. And they also loved it. Like some of the kids were asking to write and teachers are like, we haven't seen this before. So the level of engagement was higher as well.
And this would cover all of our classrooms, young fives, kindergarten through fifth grade, the teacher materials, student resources, student trade books. So class sets and materials for multiple students, everything, this is an entire comprehensive package.
How many elementary classrooms would that be then?
This year, I think we have 270.
Okay, so 270 classroom sets of materials with multiple materials for each classroom, including different books and different things as part of it. Just trying to understand the scale of this to try to understand the cost.
Yep, and we can also, I can submit the quote in, in board notes so you can actually see the, the entire package and how, what, the comprehensive nature of the material. So it's a good, it's a great question.
That would be good, that usually comes in these things and I didn't see it in this section, so that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, it also includes workbooks. So that, one of the things with structured literacy is we're trying to make sure that we are attending to skill-based instruction so that our students develop into strategic readers. And so teachers are going to be teaching more explicit lessons and the workbooks will provide opportunities for practice.
So with respect to the workbooks, again, a great, great feedback. Those workbooks get used up as part of the process then? So can you project what our future costs would be for those replenishment of those workbooks as well?
So if we wanted to replenish all of the workbooks, they, it would be $54,000, which 35J will cover again next year. However, we really need to gather feedback from our teachers because I'm not sure, I, I tried to have the, the vendor break it down so we didn't have to order all of them. Based on feedback from the piloting teachers, but they wouldn't break it down. So next year, we can kind of be very selective about what workbooks we need to support our curriculum.
Got it, so just to make sure I understand, if you had to replace 100% of the workbooks that were used, it would be 54,000. But we may only use 67% of the workbooks in the year, and so those other ones would not need to be replaced. So the maximum cost that we would have would be 54,000, and that's covered next year on the, on the grant program, but in subsequent years, may not be.
Correct. We would actually purchase ahead though, using the grant funds to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Secretary Sibyl?
No questions, this was discussed in committee last month. But I do want to commend the team on going after those grant dollars to cover the resources and the PD for this.
Thanks, President Christensen.
I echo what my board colleagues have already said, just, just curious, how many classrooms piloted this program?
We had about 60 classrooms. So it was important to get, you know, a, a good representation of, you know, our non-title schools, our Title I schools, K through fifth grade. So we had a lot of great feedback and the, the pilot went well.
Great, thank you.
Member Picard?
I had, so the website for the name of the company, are the books that are represented on there, is that the books that would be, you know, we'd be getting? The books that they show on there, the resources?
So yes, there would be like the, I think that it will say like Being a Reader and then it will outline what you need for, or what they are including in that. And then the same for Being a Writer.
Okay, all right. So, so what I would see on there is pretty, is pretty much what it is, or maybe I, oh, yeah, just, I can, I can email you.
Yeah, you'll, and you'll see it in the quote when we send the quote, because it'll show the, it'll show all of the, the, you know, the extensive nature of the resources.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to note too that we're getting the third edition of Being a Writer. The teachers piloted the second, provided feedback, and it was, you know, interesting because the company was already, they'd already received that same feedback from other teachers, so they've updated it to be more effective.
Right, thank you.
All right, Member McCoy?
I don't really have any questions that weren't already asked. Great job getting grant money for this. And I'm assuming since it was piloted extensively, that you got some good feedback on that. Because really, kids have to be able to read to be successful. Like, like once you start going into school, you have to be able to read and then write. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Josh, did you remember?
Did you remember, Josh?
So is the 35J a, like could we use that for other resources like next year? Is it like a recurring grant or is it just like this year?
You want to talk about it?
It's a two-year grant. And so it includes, you can purchase, well, you have to submit first as, your targeted literacy plan to the state for approval. And then they give the allocation and then they give half of it this year and half of it next year. And so we are being very intentional about aligning the professional development that teachers will need with the new resources.
So if it's over two years, how, how much is the grant total? Is it, you said 2 million, or did you say?
It's, it's, I think it's just over $2 million.
Because if it's over two years and you add a one and a half roughly million, like are you going to spread that cost over?
Yeah, we will spread that across the two years. All of the grant money has to be spent by September 30th, 2025.
So when, do you know when the supplies will be like put into the classroom?
Yeah, so the Being a Reader supplies, we're, we're hoping to order and have in the classrooms by the end of the school year. So if teachers wanted to take materials home, they could do that. They will have access to the online learning portal. The Being a Writer will not be available until the end of June, so it's going to ship in July.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Minnick?
Thank you, good evening. The first thing for the board's consideration this evening is approval to award contracts for bid package EL-4A Hoben Elementary Drainage Improvements. And with us this evening, we have Brian Gussman and Nick Tindall from McCarthy and Smith to share more details around this project, which will be funded by our 2020 and 23, 2020 and 2023 bond funds. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Nick Tindall with McCarthy and Smith, here today for the Hoben Elementary Site Drainage Improvement Project. So just a little overview, so this project is just going to be installation of underground storm detention system. Due to kind of when there's heavy rains, all the water from the parking lots and the roof kind of meet up in one area. Have intended to back up into the school and cause flooding. So this will kind of give a little side area to backflow into. That way, when the pipe allows it to be released, it kind of goes back into the system instead of into the school. And just one thing to note, this project is part of a future bid package that will be issued at a later date and we'll kind of go into that within the upcoming slides. So here's just the overall site plan basically of Hoben. At the bottom of the screen, there's that orange box that is where the drainage will go, or the detention pond will go. For those of you familiar with Hoben, that's in between basically the front sign and the front of the school. The parking or the main office entrance is kind of on the left side. Kind of over in this area, just for referencing. If you want to go to the next. Oh, okay. Do you want to move that? Yep. So here's just kind of a closer-up photo, again, that main office entrance is kind of up on the left side, kind of up over here. This line here is what takes all the water from the roof of the school. And this one comes off that westward parking lot. Both meet down in this structure here and then get released to the south into the main storm line under the road. That is what has been backing up, causing water to come back up into the school. So the design here is that when it back, or when it starts to fill up, it releases over to the side here and then into all of these different chambers. And it just kind of stores the water, when just naturally lets it flow through the pipe, therefore keeping it from going back into the school. So this project overall, pretty small. We have. So this project, overall, pretty small. We have just the one contractor, which would be ILE Excavating. We're working with them on other projects around the district right now. They are a woman-owned and veteran-owned company. In total, their bid amount was $196,650. We did receive nine bids as part of this project, which is pretty good. Got a lot of interest with it being a smaller project and the scheduling of it. You see the box there for the budget summary. So in total, for Hoben Elementary, it was for an addition and site improvements, for a total of 3.9 million. This award was $196,650. So remaining for our future package for the addition items, gets you right about $3.7 million. So again, we had nine total bids. There's kind of a quick breakdown of different items. So one of those was a woman-owned company, zero minority-owned, four-union, five non-union, one veteran-owned, two small business administration, and one disadvantaged business enterprise. You might notice that those don't equal up to nine, but kind of like as I shown on the other slide, one company can be a couple of these. So that's kind of how that's broken down. As far as the total schedule, we will be starting in June and then finishing up within July. So starting after kids get out, being done before kids go back. And that is proposed for seeding, so just normal grass with a straw mat over the top, like we've done on other projects. So just keeping that thing watered. The structures themselves will be all underground, so there'll be nothing visual above ground. You really won't know that anything happened, other than the grass seed and the dirt on top once everyone comes back. That's, well, yeah, any questions? All right, we'll start with the member McCoy.
So this will take care of the drainage and flooding problems they've been having?
Yeah, everything, yeah. So everything will go back into those structures rather than flooding straight back up and into the school like it has been.
That's it.
Oh, I just had a question. In FNO, we talked about SOD because it was a small area. Was there, were we supposed to get a price on that?
So we did get pricing on that. I think it was roughly?
I think it was to the tune of about $6,700. And so what we would propose, and we would bring that back to the Bond Steering Committee, in which we meet every Friday, certainly plenty of time between now and then to make that decision. During FNO, we kind of talked through from a traffic perspective, how many students typically walk through there. That's not typically a path of travel, but certainly is an opportunity if the district were to elect to move forward with SOD. We did receive pricing, and again, doesn't necessarily have to be made that decision today, but as we get a little bit closer, it's an option.
Just a bad idea. Thank you. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you. No questions.
So a couple of things that were discussed during FNO. Originally, we were worried because of the location of this, that this field like, or felt like it was part of a normal traffic pattern. But one of the members of the FNO committee is a Hoben parent and shared with us that no one really walks in this area. So it's not a typical, typical path. So I think that the seed and straw is probably the most economical option and will work well, and will probably be well-seeded by the time school starts. So if it was a heavy traffic path, that's where we were looking at the SOD. If you guys see something different as you're going through that, then obviously you've got the quote, and that can come forward as part of the process. The other thing is, is because this is a disruption of the sign there, there will be some additional electrical work there, but that's included in the project to reconnect the electrical for the, for the sign. So this will put everything back, and other than new grass there, it'll look great, and we won't have any flooding. So there's been three events over the last, the last 12 months in this process. That's why this project got pulled forward, and why we're not doing it as part of the broader Hoben Bond Projects here. We want to address that flooding issues. Thank you.
Okay. No real questions. Just remind me, when is, when does the work on Hoben start, the bigger project?
So we're about another year and a half out before that site work were to continue. Part of the concern was that if we get bogged down with the details of that addition, it would delay the relief of that flooding. So we kind of viewed as two separate entities. So it's still on the docket in the future, but this did rate it up in the precedence or order of priority.
Okay, thank you.
Just one general question. I was thinking about like how we can look over time at our, like, when we go out to bid, our diversity and who we, in the end, go with. Is there a way, like yearly or semi-yearly, that we could get like a progress report kind of on like percentage-wise, like how many women-owned companies we had to bid but then also went with? So like two different things. And then same with like all other minorities or like veteran owns, if that makes sense?
It makes a lot of sense. This has been kind of a topic as far as tracking, and what, what kind of bids are we receiving? So we wouldn't, we could only go back so far as to far, call it this year. Certainly, we could take all the bids that we received to date, and we can certainly talk through how often we want to do that. But all we would do is basically grab the same information that we've got here, and we'll just consolidate it. So that's not an overly, you know, large task to do. We'll just have to figure out how often we want to do that and what manner we want to present it.
Remember, Keel, I thought we?
We already discussed this, Josh, in FNO. So you may have, actually, you're not on FNO anymore. So we, we did discuss this in FNO. This is the report that they're going to pull together for us. We'll only be able to go back to the point that we started being really diligent about gathering this information.
That was, how long ago was that?
We discussed it maybe a month or two ago? So I don't know what the?
No, how long?
Oh, I'm sorry. We've been doing this focused data gathering for maybe a year, year and a half.
About a year. Prior to that, we really didn't have that information available, and so we actually changed our bid form, because that's not necessarily open in upfront. So we actually switched our bid form around, so we can pull some of this information. And through that process, now we're getting some of these other groups. Initially, we had kind of characterized a few groups to make sure that we're tracking, but now we've kind of opened it. Every group that, if they're affiliated with a certain group, we've identified it in that column, just so we know what that representation is, and is presented here to the board at the time of the award.
President Keel, have you set a target date to present the data?
No, we had a discussion with the FNO team, and they were going to give us a date when they thought it would be an appropriate time to do that.
Okay, so that'll be subject of the future.
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. Now we have a couple first and final, well, we have a first and final, a couple first and final, and a final. First is action item 240464, Consider Approval Resolution for a Water Main Easement for Bid Package PSEP-2 New Stadium. And this is a first and final.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a water main easement for bid package PSEP-2 New Stadium, first and final reading, action item 240464.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Who would like to tee it up, since it's a first and final?
Hello again. I'm Brian Gussman with McCarthy and Smith. This is something that you've seen in the past, specifically with like the Plymouth High School bandroom addition. On occasion, addition is going to be located right where your existing water main is in existence today. So if we could scroll down, all we're basically doing at, nope, you're good, you're good. Yeah, so we're looking for just the revised, this is for the new stadium?
The next, the next presentation.
You're good. So there's an existing water main. We're basically just bumping north. So this is pertinent to Phase 3, where the new multipurpose room concession team rooms addition is going to be located. What we're proposing today is really just rectifying.
Nope.
No, go back.
That's Tennis Courts.
All good. Keep me on my toes.
One at the bottom of the page, right there. Resolution Water Main Aisement, the bottom of the, there you go.
There we go.
Page 52.
And then if we keep scrolling down until we see a picture. What you see at the top of the page here, this is Canton Phase 3, or known here as the Canton Field House. So your existing water main runs basically right to the north side of the existing building. The proposed addition that we have kind of ongoing right now, basically takes shape right over top of that. So this is just proposing moving that easement to the north outside of the building footprint. So if there were to ever be a rupture or damage or whatever be the case, it's not underneath the building. It could be easily serviced. The tie-in, this would not impact the course of the school day. The tie-in would take place over the summer, and we would coordinate with David Reed Norwalk and the, and the rest of the group to make sure it's not impacting any other activities during that course of time.
And the need for it to be first and final?
Just from a, well, from a progress perspective, it allows us to continue to move forward and actually implement the water main work itself. It does take some time for the engineers to draft this document, which is why it's coming to you today. That is interfaced with both Canton Township and Wayne County. So this enables the contractor to continue to move forward with the new water main, as we continue to progress with the field as we speak.
And the cost for this were already included in the budget that we did for the project? This is just the easement agreement with Canton Township?
All right. Any questions? I'll start with Josh.
I have no questions. Thank you.
And Member McCoy?
No questions.
I don't, what's that?
Go to her.
He's switching it up.
Oh, okay.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
No questions. Quick question about timeline. What's the anticipated timeline, start to finish?
So we've already started. So the addition, we're carrying a timeline right around September, October, for the physical construction of the addition. And then the field itself is scheduled to be ready right around September.
Okay.
No questions.
And again, no questions. Thank you.
All right. All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Carrie 7-0. Action item 240465, Consider Approval of Resolution for a Chiller Purchase at Salem High School. This is also a first and final.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a chiller purchase at Salem High School, first and final reading, action item 240465.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
This is a replacement chiller that is going in at Salem to, we have three chillers that are present at Salem. One of those chillers is, needs a mid-cycle refresh. It's, that's the cost associated with this process. This will get us about another 10 to 15 years of life out of that chiller. And this chiller is actually an excellent chiller. This chiller alone could power the entire Salem building. However, one of the chillers that we have at Salem right now is currently out of service. So it is not operational at all, and it will replace in the future bond project that we do with Salem. So this chiller is operational, but it's time to do that maintenance work to make sure that it's well-suited for us. And we brought it forward as a first and final, because if we can get this approved now, we could have this done, the work could start immediately, and this would allow us to have this done before things get really hot, although today is pretty toasty.
70 degrees today. Are there any?
Tim, did I, anything else to add?
No, it's a great unit. It's a McQuay, and this will get us, the bond is actually scheduled to replace three chillers. We've already rebuilt one. This one will last us another 12 to 15 years. So the bond will only have to replace the remaining third chiller.
Okay.
And just a clarification that this is a repair to the current chiller.
All right, thank you. And because it's a repair, we have to use general fund dollars versus bond funds?
Thank you, yes.
Very good.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Carrie 7-0. Lastly, action item 240466, Consider Approval of Resolution for Bid Package Number PSEP-2 Tennis Courts Award, and this is the final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package PSEP-2 Tennis Courts Award, final reading, action item 240466.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, questions?
We talked about this extensively at the last board meeting, as well as in FNO, and FNO is before that, and there's been great feedback and input from the community as part of this whole project.
Anything else? All right, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. Passes 7-0. That concludes Finance and Operations, and we are on to citizens' comments. We have one citizen comment this evening.
I'll be me.
I think so.
That's okay.
All right.
It's a multiple.
My name is Venkatesh Raman. I'm a proud PSEP parent of two proud PSEP children. However, today, I'm here to talk about a somber topic, and a hopeful one, I think. I'd like to bring up the topic of continuing education and reintegration for students under suspension or expulsion. Given that this is not an uncommon occurrence, I would like to understand the following specific points. One, what resources exist for these children to continue their education and to work towards reintegrating into the community? How do they get continued access to course material? How do they take their tests and work towards graduation and become contributing members of the society? Number two, how many children in the past have made a successful continuation of their education at PCCS following a severe discipline? And then three, given that a lot of the responsibility and burden for supporting these children will eventually fall on our teachers, what guidelines and resources exist to support our teachers in these cases? Expulsion is like slamming a door shut on the children's future. At the very least, in nonviolent cases, where there is every indication that a different intervention could be successful, we could try to keep the door ajar, require these students to maintain their grades, to follow rules during this period. This way, they remain connected to education, and we pave a path for their return to the community. It is for all the children. I'm sure that this expedience panel is well aware of the latest research in this area. In light of this, I respectfully urge the board of our fine educational institution that we're all very proud of to conduct a review of our discipline policies in nonviolent incidents and take steps to consider meaningful alternatives. I thank the panel for the time and the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to further developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, all citizens' comments, especially when there's questions, like the ones that you raised, are followed up directly from Dr. Merritt, who will provide an answer to those questions. We don't respond real time during, during these meetings, just because this isn't a forum for a back and forth. So I just wanted to articulate that so that you understood, you know, that we won't be responding. However, you can expect a response direct from, from Dr. Merritt. So, thank you. All right. Action item discussion, we have a couple, and I'll ask, the first was action item 240467, Consider Approval of Policy 914 Citizens Advisory Committee. And this was a final reading. There's a question, but I'll first ask Member McCoy, who's over the policy committee, just to tee this up. Remind us what the, what number 9140 is, and then I'll turn it over to Member Picard, who had a question, and we can have a discussion.
Do we need a motion first, or not?
Yeah, considering it's a vote.
Yep.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Policy Number 9140 Citizens Advisory Committee, final reading.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right.
So, let's see, this one, like off-policies, we've discussed this extensively. We started discussing this in August of 2023. There were some, we had some questions about Citizens Advisory Committees as opposed to Board Ad-Hoc Committees and the different committees we've done in the past. We've been working with legal counsel to make sure that our, what we do is compliant with the Open Meetings Act. And so on this one, we discussed it in committee. We sent We sent it out to legal to draft some, some language. Legal counsel came to multiple meetings and discussed this with us. Ms. Langford also sent it over to Neola to have them look at it and see if they had any updates. And so we added some language in there around what, some committees, depending on what the purpose of the committee, they are not necessarily required to comply with the Open Meetings Act, because what's being discussed in the meeting is not public at that time. So to put that in there, a lot of this is legal language that legal came up with. And just to also put some more parameters around when people want to be on a committee, what more, what the expectations are for everybody? Because we found that with the last committee we did, that we didn't really have expectations, and people have questions. Like what are we doing? What might the timeframe be? What are we going to accomplish? So that was most of it, just in an effort to kind of codify things that we discussed, but we never pull through.
Member McQuinn, can I add to that? Just that conversation, the richness that we had over the two months that we discussed this back...
No, no, it's in August. It's April now.
Oh, that's right.
It's April.
Many, many months. One of the other things that we talked about was making sure that people who are involved with these committees understand privileged private information, and not to be disclosing those, that information. So there is agreement that committee members will be asked to sign if we engage in that sort of work.
So just on that point, there's a spelling mistake here. It's on the, that section that describes the NDA. It says, committee members shall SIGU, a nondisclosure agreement. So just a minor correction that's there.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Yeah, that wasn't my question. So that wasn't...
All of our questions.
I was just, I was concerned with the, that it wasn't specific to, like the transparency of a committee, because one of, just because of what we went through with the Canton Committee and stuff. Like what, how would, how will there be transparency in these meetings? And when it says on here the requirements, that, like what specifically act in a manner that is consistent with the mission and vision of the board and district, compared to act with civility in the manner that is consistent with the board? So is acting mean like if you have an opinion? Because you've got, those two are kind of the same. Or are they different? That was my question. Because you may get somebody on a, on a committee that doesn't agree with some of the things that the board has decided of the vision or the mission. And so, and the concern then comes, so if they agree, and then it says, so if everybody agrees on this committee, or like wants to take this person off a committee, because they're not going with a certain expectation of what they think, or what they should be thinking, are they going to be taken off because of that? Because we want to have diversity of ideas and diversity of meanings. And so if it's not the popular decision, or, I mean, I wouldn't want to see somebody taken off a committee if they disagreed with something that was going on, because it wasn't in the sense of, that it wouldn't be applied to some of the people on there, that it wasn't according to the board vision, if that makes sense? The transparency, you know, like if they disagreed with something, in which they have a right to disagree, would they then, if everybody else said, well, we don't like that, so we're going to take you off the board? So I was concerned about that, because, you know, the whole purpose of an advisory committee is to have a whole difference in of opinions and things like that. So there wasn't anything specific listed of what would be taken off, or, because that would be subjective. And then there wasn't on there, you know, just the specifics of like act in a manner, what, you know, it seems kind of vague, act in a manner? Because it's act in, it's like think in a manner, or act in a manner? I'm not quite sure the difference of those two listed.
So it sounds like you're asking for a better understanding of what the intent of that language is.
Yeah, the language, and just, it's just as a guideline, and then also, if, you know, if it's a possible, like, if there's nothing that, like what kind of information listed would be considered confidential? I think in the last one, you know, we didn't want to give names of, if students were participating in that, we didn't want to give the names. But students participate in a lot of activities and things, though, so do we not, like, we have Josh's name? I mean, they're, so if they have a concern about that, what would be the purpose of not, if they're bringing it to the board, when they want to have a committee, what would be the purpose of not having their name on there, I mean, if they're going to participate? And we want student voice.
So I can give some perspectives on this from my point of view.
A lot of questions on that, I guess.
I think that when we talk about acting, it's about looking at things like our operating principles. This talks about things like coming to the meeting and being prepared, and being an active participant, engaging in critical and crucial conversations, using independent and objective judgment. It's not asking people to change their opinion. It's not asking to change how they agree or disagree about something in a policy, but we are asking for people to be respectful and to be thoughtful as part of that process. That's where our board principals have come in as part of this work, because it's the work that we do here at the board table. With respect to confidentiality, these committees are doing work that is necessary, that will ultimately come before the full board. That's why they're acting as part of the government function. That's why they are required to comply with the Opens Meeting Acts in that process, or there are things that are just part of an activity that's a committee that's being done. That confidential information is crucial to be maintained in that process. We don't want having people in a committee going to the press, going to social media, and talking about things that are being deliberate, deliberated in those committees that are intended to be confidential. If people don't want to sign a nondisclosure agreement, then they shouldn't be part of the committee.
I think I can add also, when you talk about confidential information, you ask specifically about students. We're looking at things that would be identifiable information that would, not, subject to FERPA. So for example, a student's name would be a part of our directory information that would be able to be shared, but you wouldn't want to give a student's phone number or a student's email address.
Right.
So those are things that are protecting the privacy, that you wouldn't, that wouldn't be a responsive document in a FOIA-type of scenario.
And many of the, many of the items that are discussed in these committees become a public document after the board has seen them. Like, so however, if they're FOIA'd, then the district makes sure that personally identifiable information that should not be put out there is redacted before that is sent out.
Okay. So it's not saying that there wouldn't be transparency, because you still can FOIA it afterwards.
You can still FOIA it. This is to keep it confidential while the work is being done.
Yeah, for me, I think part of that goes to the, to the process, right? So if you think about the purpose of our committees, that's where the work is done. The, you know, sometimes over months and months, and maybe even a year, that's where the work is done. It doesn't come before the board, right? There's a lot of work that gets done in the committee that never makes it to the board. So if information is getting out ahead of the board, we're then asked to respond to something that we haven't even seen yet.
Okay.
And that's happened in the past, where, you know, quite honestly, we're being attacked in public on things that we haven't even seen yet, as a, as a full board, because it's coming out from committee. And that makes it hard for us to respond, and it could come off as if we're not doing our job. But once again, the structure of a committee is that's where the work is done. Then it comes before the board for review, vetting, and voting. So, so good, good discussion. I think that brings some good clarity. Additional questions?
No, that was, that was pretty much, I just didn't understand the, you know, the meaning of those two different requirements, and then the transparency part of it. I wanted to make sure that, you know, so that would come after. Okay.
Good discussion.
All right. Thank you.
All in favor? Was that, it's for both?
You don't have to, yeah.
Got you.
The same thing on both of them, they had a question.
Understood. Okay. All right. So all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? All right. Pass is seven zero. I will just tee it up in case there's any other questions from, from anyone. Just action item 240468. Consider approval of policy 9140 dot 01, facilities utilization boundary study. That was the final reading as well. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve policy number 9140 dot 01, facilities utilization and boundary study. Final reading.
I'll second.
There's a second? All right. Any questions or comments? All right. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no? All right. Pass is seven zero. All right. We have a follow-up board questions. None as of 3/12/24 board meeting. So we didn't have any follow-up from last one. Questions from, from this board meeting? Follow-up?
Remind me, I think there was one.